Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 7 o'clock, and I'm gonna give it to the superintendent.
So as a preliminary matter, this is Dr. Burnham, Superintendent of Schools. I will do a roll call to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order at...
Mrs. Shroka?
Yes.
Mr. Layton?
Yeah?
Okay. Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Mr. Leveque?
Yes, I am having some audio issues, though, hearing.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, well, I'm trying to determine if it's my network on my side or if I need to reboot here. It's coming through metallic.
Do you want us to continue or give you a minute?
Give me a minute, I'm going to reboot and come back in.
Okay. Can we turn off the audio for a time? School committee member? Where's Jim? For all those who just joined us, we're waiting for Jim to reboot. Oh, there, you know, there he is.
I can't hear you now.
Can you hear us?
I don't hear you now, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, sorry about that.
So staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Recording secretary, Ms. Sue Summers?
Yes.
And business manager, Mr. Michael Cassidy?
Yes.
I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Shroka.
Okay, I'm gonna do the introduction to remote meeting. Good evening. According to the requirements of open meeting law, please advise that this meeting is being recorded and is being broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. And this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee is being conducted remotely. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. And all town facilities are currently closed to the public. In accordance with Governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30 subsection 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the town website on the COVID-19 Information Center page, access through the town manager's webpage allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless participation is required by. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lunenburg School Committee is convening by telephone conference, video conference via Zoom app, Facebook Live, et cetera, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and that take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning into the first of the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting. I, Heather Sroh, for the chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their report marks, the chair will go down in line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motion. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each of you by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be concluded by roll call vote. And just a reminder about public comment. The first public comment for agenda items only, and the second public comment to anything that falls under the jurisdiction of the school committee. So with that, our first agenda item is the fiscal '21 budget hearing. Superintendent? You're gonna screen share that?
Yep.
Okay.
Let me try that again. There we go.
Going through it, and we're at the questions section.
Okay, so this is the budget that we are bringing forward to you this evening as a recommended budget presentation. Again, in thinking about the development of our budget, we always think about the mission of the Lunenburg Public Schools. And the mission of the Lunenburg Public Schools is to provide all students with the skills, confidence, and passion for lifelong learning so that they may find their own path to successful careers, active citizenship, and rewarding lives. We also look to our vision. And the Lunenburg Public Schools is committed to becoming a leader in education by focusing on its values of attending to the personal well-being of its students, providing high-quality curricula and student-centered instruction for deeper learning at all levels, and promoting the development of attributes and skills necessary for continuous learning for all. Throughout this budget process, the budget priorities were to develop a budget that meets student needs and aligns with the strategy for continuous improvement objectives. The budget process this year began in August and September with the district leadership team working to develop the strategy for continuous improvement, aligning school improvement plan goals, administrator and teacher evaluation goals, all of those with the strategy for continuous improvement objectives. In October, the instructional leadership team began to develop a five-year staffing plan that would support the needs and execute the strategy of the continuous improvement plan that was put forward. Department leaders and building administrators developed their FY '21 budget requests, which were focused on highest impact on teaching and learning in alignment with the strategy objectives. I also presented trends in population and student needs data at the symposium in October. In November, budgets were submitted to me, and individual meetings were held with each department head and building administrator to review the budget line requests. In November, the leadership team continued to refine the five-year staffing plan. In December, the five-year staffing plan was finalized and submitted to the town manager, and it was incorporated into the five-year financial forecast presented in January by the town manager. In December, we also presented that five-year staffing plan as identified needs. In January, the leadership team prioritized the year-one positions and identified those deemed most important for inclusion in our FY '21 budget proposal. And that proposal was presented to the school committee on January 22nd. In February, the budget was adjusted for actual health insurance increases, and there were three possible scenarios presented to the school committee on February 26th. And those were a 3.4% budget increase, a 2.9% budget increase, and a 2.5% budget increase. In March, three budget scenarios were presented in detail, and that was on March 11th. And the school committee supported a 3.24% budget, but agreed that all budget scenarios would be presented to the finance committee on March 12th. And then, then I had to close schools because of the COVID-19 pandemic, and that was effective March 16th. And then the governor also issued that schools be closed, and his order was effective March 17th. And we were scheduled to hold our public budget hearing on March 18th, but that week, all town meetings were canceled as per the town manager. In April, the town manager requested a level service budget with no new positions. We did present a level service budget, but we did include critical teaching positions, and that budget is a 1.58% increase. And obviously, our budget hearing has been rescheduled for this evening. And right now, we still have an annual town meeting scheduled for 13th. So COVID-19 does not eliminate or change any of the state mandates under which we operate. It does not change our shifting demographic, socioeconomics, ethnic, or racial. It does not change the fact that our enrollment is trending upward. It does not change our projected staffing needs. And it does not change our student needs, not their academic needs or their behavioral needs. It may actually have had some impact on our social-emotional needs for our students, which we continue to check in on and evaluate. And we will certainly, when school does reopen, have that as a priority focus. COVID-19 does create some new challenges. Under the remote learning, you know, our challenges have been to ensure that our students are fed, that our students can equitably access remote learning, internet access, computers for each student. We've been working to ensure that our teachers have training in instructional technology. We've been working to ensure the quality of the teaching that's happening in these virtual classrooms. We are ensuring the delivery of special education services and behavioral health supports for students, families, and staff. Another challenge, opening the schools, whenever that might be. We know that the schools are closed now through the end of this school year. But when we reopen with physical distancing, we will have challenges around transporting students to and from school, serving lunch, classrooms with desks six feet apart. Passing between classes and recess are just a handful of things that we are going to have to consider in reimagining what our school opening is going to be in the fall. And we have potentially some lingering impacts. We need to be sure that our staff and our students feel that it's safe for them to return to our school buildings. So the budget that we presented January 22nd, which was endorsed by the committee on March 11th, was a 3.24% increase. It included an assistant principal position, a full-time school psychologist position, a special teacher for Turkey Hill Elementary School, our building leadership stipends, and the expense lines for each school as they were requested. So the recommended FY '21 budget that we bring before you tonight does have two new positions in the budget. One of them being that special ed teacher for Turkey Hill Elementary. As you know, I've explained that that is to fully staff the model of the transitions program that we have established at the primary school. And there is a model that exists at the middle and high school, but there's a gap in the district's capacity to provide services in line with that at Turkey Hill. And we know that we have students coming up from the primary school who are going to need these services and supports to continue for them. So that's why I'm saying that this is actually a position that would maintain level service. We are also putting on a Wilson Orton-Gillingham reading teacher. When we first started this budget process, this type of service at Turkey Hill Elementary had been provided by Judy Pierce, one of our paraprofessionals. And as you may recall, unexpectedly, Judy passed away in February. So we've been working to fill this position for the rest of the school year. It has been a challenge, honestly, to find somebody that is trained. My concern is that this is an opportune time to transition to a different model. This is a specially designed instruction. And specially designed instruction should be delivered under the supervision or directly delivered by a certified teacher. It's fine for these types of services to be delivered by a paraprofessional, but under the direction of a teacher. We don't have a teacher in the district that is certified. But this is something that we need to do. And again, this is something that opened up as an issue for us to look at with Judy's passing in February. We also, in this budget, have increased the unemployment line. And you may recall that the original budgets that we presented, all three of the scenarios that we presented prior, included a salary reserve of $322,000 so that we could negotiate new contracts with our teachers, our custodians, paraprofessionals, and food service staff. In this budget, we're including $30,000 as a salary reserve to accommodate some adjustments for some of our staff members. As an example, we know that there are... In the salary schedule for paraprofessionals, some of the salary steps don't even... They're not even minimum wage. So we know that we need to make some adjustments, but we are down considerably from the original $322,000. And largely, that makes up the decrease from our original budget down to this 1.58%. So here you can see the total of those new positions is approximately $123,000. You see the salary reserve. There is some expense reduction in this version of the budget. And just for level service for staffing, carrying all of our staff over and honoring their contractual movement on the salary schedule is roughly $350,000. So our total proposed budget with the 1.58% increase is 21, a little over 21 million. So what is it that we're losing when we look at the 3.24% budget compared to the budget that I'm putting before you for consideration this evening? We won't have that assistant principal position. We won't have the school psychologist position, not even the half-time position that we had proposed in some of the earlier scenarios. And we don't have a salary reserve that would afford us offering COLAs to any of our groups that we're currently negotiating contracts with. So what's the impact of the reduction? Our capacity to optimally meet the needs of our students is diminished. I can tell you that our teachers work very, very hard. Our pairs work very hard. Our administrators work very hard to meet the needs of all of our students. But we don't have the appropriate staff or the appropriate staffing levels of particular types of staff to do that optimally. And quite frankly, this budget is really going to have an impact on the progress that we can make in the execution of the strategy for continuous improvement. So there are still some budgetary unknowns. We're not sure yet from the state what the circuit breaker monies will be. We're not sure of our allocations that will be coming in our state and federal grants. As I told you, that typically happens in the summer. Although, given the current conditions, I'm not sure that we will have those allocations, you know, in late July or early August this year. It may take a bit longer. And, you know, we still have our contracts to settle up, so we're working on that as well. And again, I just want to call attention to future unknowns. We don't have any reliable tools for a reliable projection in enrollment, but we know that that trend has been increasing. We know that we have seen shifting demographic and student needs. We don't know how that will continue to unfold over time. We also still have to consider in the future the impact to the school department should we be moving forward with a renovation of TCP. We would have to relocate likely our office space, our program space, and our storage space. And again, another future unknown is what will we be doing in terms of the Turkey Hill Elementary School? Will we be looking potentially at a renovation project or a new build? And now with the state of, you know, the global economy, I'm not sure what the impact to that might be. So I've said this before. As the town of Lunenburg continues to see growth and shifting demographic changes, the level service budget is not going to allow us to perform at or above the state in terms of student achievement and growth. It is not allowing, this budget in particular, is not allowing us to optimally meet the needs of our students. As we look ahead, we're going to have to get to a point, if we want to see those things realized, where we are investing in the operational budget of the school so that we can meet the needs of our students. And that's all I've got. Shall I stop the screen share, or do you want me to go back to slides?
Does any of the, do any of the school committee members need the slides up? I can't see anybody.
No.
No? No Carol?
No.
No Jim?
There's a Jim, no.
Yeah, okay, Brian? Wendy, do you need the slides? Wendy's on mute. Okay. Do you have any questions for Superintendent Burnham, school committee members? Wendy, do you have a question?
I do. Do we have a choice tonight? Do we have to recommend this budget? In light of the last statement you made, in light of the fact that when our students go back to school in the fall, we will be beginning with additional challenges and deficits from loss this spring. So that makes a level service budget even more... You know, it diminishes even more. I guess the question is, I'm uncertain as to whether... If we did not move forward with recommending this budget, what happens?
Well, I think ultimately, in the end, the town manager is gonna put forward a budget that the town can afford. And likely she'll allot us a number. And then we'd be back to you to give our best recommendation as to how to optimally use the funds that we have for our budget. I can tell you that I'm aware that there are some members of the Board of Selectmen that are concerned that even this level of a budget is something that the town can't support in the current climate.
So do you don't support this budget, the number could come back even lower?
Lower.
Yeah, that's... Okay, that is not something that we can take a chance on.
That, and that was part of, that's what I was trying to get.
Well, and at a minimum, we have to cover the contractual...
Obligation.
...salary increases, right? Which, by its very nature, it means there's an increase.
Correct.
We can't, we can't cut $350,000 out of supplies and the non... $350,000 out of supplies and the non-salary.
To make up for it, yeah.
To make up for it. It's just, it's going to be physically impossible to do that, in my opinion.
Yeah, if the number was lowered, then you're going to have to start laying off staff.
Correct. Trying to avoid any decreases in staff at all. Right, but don't want to lose any staff.
And this is Jim, I have a question regarding along those lines. The guidelines, assuming we open in the fall, you know, we're looking at potentially adding six feet of space between students and the classrooms. The classrooms weren't designed for that with the staffing level that we have and the class sizes that we have. So what would, I mean, we're, at that point, we're looking at even greater numbers, I assume, in terms of staffing or somehow scheduling that you can get 12 students or 10 students into a classroom versus 20 or 25. I don't, I don't know how we manage to do that.
Right, so we're still awaiting further guidance from the Department of Ed relative to what physically distanced reopen might look like. You know, they've, they've talked about staggered attendance so that you're not having all of the students report on a given day. You still can't put 22, 3, 4 students in one classroom and have them six feet apart. So that's a challenge. Busing our students to keep the numbers low enough in the bus, you're potentially looking at having to double the bus runs. So I don't want to get ahead of ourselves here. I think that I can't imagine too many scenarios where there aren't going to be some costs incurred for us to reopen. You know, I mean, just purchasing masks for students and staff to wear every day, change them out daily, thermometers to take temperatures of employees and students. There will likely be costs that we will have to incur that I can't with certainty tell you right now what those costs are going to be and what is going to be required of us. That guidance hasn't come out yet. I know that the commissioner is working diligently on this because, you know, the safety of our staff and students is a priority. But we also, you know, to have all of our students remain home and learning remotely, I don't think that that's the best option forward either. You know, I'm thinking that what ends up happening might actually be a hybrid of attending campus and learning remotely. And I think too that we, we have to be prepared to revert right back to a remote learning model as we currently have. I don't anticipate that it would be for a three-month stretch of time, but there may be an occasion where we have to shut down for a handful of weeks. And we have to be ready to roll right back into the remote learning. And we're working on a plan for that.
Carol?
Yeah, I just want to say that I, I've looked at a lot, I've watched a lot of the meetings with the Board of Selectmen and with the Finance Committee, and I've listened to their conversation. And everybody is all in this together. And there are a lot of people that feel that we need to be more conservative in this year's budget than other people feel. There's a lot of that. But none of that that I have heard has been pointed at the school side. Every, everybody understands that we don't know what we're going to need when we come back in September. We don't know how that's going to work. And at this point in time, I think the town manager has put forth a conservative budget with some fairly good reserves in it. She has reserves in that budget that are almost a million dollars. And that's because we don't know what we're walking into. So in my opinion, I don't like this budget any more than anybody else. We can't get ahead this way. We're barely treading water. It doesn't meet the needs of kids that have been pulled out of school for several months and who knows what kind of shape they're going to be in academically or emotionally when they return. But I also think that the town would be willing to hear us if we came back in November and said, we've incurred all these costs because we have to provide masks. So we have incurred costs because of different things. I don't think anybody's expecting us to know what we're going to need to do in September. Because nobody could know.
And this is Jim Leveque. One of the concerns I have also is the, we had planned for having a school psychologist. And this new budget calls for no increase or no school psychologist. Yeah, we go back to school in a situation where we pull kids out to Ms. Arshonboz. Adding on to what she was saying, I think that we run the risk of having kids not having that social emotional support that they need with this budget. But again, to what, I'm fully agreeing with what Carol said. I think the town manager came, came to us with a very conservative budget. And I think it's likely something that we can, we'll have to make work. But there are certainly things that I don't think, we're stuck like we were last year in trying to approve a budget and recommend a budget that none of us really fully believes in because it doesn't meet the needs of our students. And I know that that's a very difficult thing for us to admit, especially in this pandemic.
Mr. Cassidy? Do we know of any retirements coming up that will, let's say, find some money when rehiring? Or are we, are we flat on retire?
There are a few retirements coming up. And we'll discuss those later on in the meeting as, as we try to release the hiring freeze so I can post a few positions. So I'm aware of two, and they'll be presented later on. And there's a possible third that we were made aware of today, but we don't have something in writing just yet.
Okay.
So, you know, once again, that's, if, you know, that's probably savings of tens of thousands, not hundreds of thousands. Unless we can take a look at those positions a little bit differently. But you know, that, that, that may, the leadership team will have to take a look at that if we shift duties and responsibilities. I think you'll find out that the two that are being presented tonight are pretty critical. Thus, the reason why I'm presenting them to you for consideration. So one thing I just want to reiterate is that the Wilson reading teacher position that is being proposed in this budget, you know, we are eliminating a paraprofessional position in lieu of creating a teaching position. So there is a, it's, you know, we're not keeping the para position, which was Ms. Pierce. We're creating a model that's creating a teacher around, around those services. So I just, I just want to be clear to the committee that, so there's a reduction in the para position and an increase to a teacher position. It's both at the same building.
So not like thousands of dollars fine to hire the school psychologist at Turkey Hill?
So if we are lucky, we could probably, as we get through the hiring season, and there may be some other people leave for other positions, you know, we may be able to create enough funding for potentially a part-time psychologist position. So we'll know that as we move through the summer.
Okay.
But I can't, I can't put that in the budget. And I'm not going to ask the school committee to allow me to post that without the funding either. But I think you're onto something.
Okay.
That, you know, those are the, a little pocket of money here and a little pocket of money there may allow us to open up some of these positions. And we have a, if we're posting a position, if it's a new position, it will certainly be, come in front of the school committee for consideration.
And I just want to reiterate that those positions aren't in the budget, not because we don't need them desperately. We do. But we were asked to submit a level service budget with no new positions. And we cannot submit a level service budget without including these positions because they are services that need to be delivered. And that's why we felt that we put forward this, this model that included those positions because we feel strongly that this is a level service budget and these positions are critical to maintain level service.
Does anyone have any other questions? I'm going to say questions because I'm not going to say concerns because there are many of those. So you, I, I think we have to support this because we don't want the town manager to come back with a lower figure for the school department.
I agree.
You agree?
I agree. It is a, I'd like to hear what our public may have to say as a public hearing. Some out of the box thinking that perhaps might be out there that we can't consider.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Who, Mr. Passios?
Yes, good evening. I see Peter Beardmore's got his hand up also. So I'm sure he's going to reiterate some of the information that came out of last evening's joint meeting between the Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen with our Senator and Representative Hay. We got a strong commitment from them now that they understand our concerns about the Monty Tech budget and the formula that created our assessment there. And going forward, more financial assistance to be able to support the school budget. So with that, hopefully straightened out by the fall, there is some optimism that there'll be some more money, you know, late in the summer or at least by a special town meeting. I know that's kind of too late for the first half of the school year, but it's one bright light anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Passios.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, Mr. Beardmore.
Cool. Good evening. First of all, one upside, everybody's so down and somber. You get to see the inside of people's houses with these Zoom. And I noticed that Mr. Cassidy has a Bruce Springsteen Darkness on the Edge of Town album over his left shoulder. There's some, I didn't know he was a Bruce fan. Found closeness there. I just wanted to comment that, you know, as, as the superintendent alluded to, the way the budget is now constructed, there's nearly a million dollars that has been set aside that accounts for what we anticipate to be some level of a drop in state aid, particular Chapter 70, because of the economic impact that COVID-19 is having on commerce in the state. Yes, there are levers that the state can potentially pull and push, including the state's Reserve Fund, including money coming in from the CARES Act and other places. So if you look at perhaps a 10% drop in state aid, which would probably be on the high side, we hope. If you consider a 10% drop in state aid, that would nearly eat that million dollars. If we don't see that drop, then that money theoretically becomes available to be appropriated for, for the fall town meeting. The problem that I see here is that, and I mentioned this last night at the Joint Committee for the Board of Selectmen and the school department, that if there's one department that operates on a truly annualized basis rather than a continual basis that can make modifications more easily as you go along, the school department is heavily impacted by changes in an annual budget that could then be modified at some unknown later date. And so I think that the impact on the school department particularly great just because of the nature of the way that you do business. And, and, and I think we should be sensitive to that. One thought that occurred to me as the superintendent was presenting her budget, I think it's inevitable that we are going to have mitigation costs associated with going back to school that are going to be pretty substantial. To the point that we probably won't be able to do them without some sort of special funding or, or something. I have no idea what, what that could potentially be. But I'm worried that we're going to go into the summer without a mechanism, without sufficiently appropriate funds to be able to do whatever it is that you need to do. And so I'm wondering if there's a way and/or if there have been discussions with the town manager to perhaps look at a portion of that $980,000 and creating a special reserve that's appropriated and can only be used to address some of these issues. And I don't know if there's, I don't know what the mechanics of that would be. I'm not expert enough in municipal finance to understand how that could potentially work. Obviously, we want to be conservative. We don't want to use money that we don't absolutely have to use. Also don't want to be in a position where we can't do the things that we have to do to get back to school because we have not appropriated appropriately during the June town meeting.
Does anybody have any thoughts on that? Thank you, Mr. Beardmore.
Thank you.
It's a good, good point. Again, I'm not sure if there's a mechanism for that either. Certainly worth asking.
I guess I would ask, could you go through line that and, and the HR director too? Can you go through transfers for this? Document it well to let the town manager know.
In terms of the costs that we, we anticipate incurring?
All costs that occur in July or August and preparations that we don't have the funding. Line item transfer purchases.
So just so that you all know, right from the beginning, we've been tracking all of the expenses that are related to this COVID-19 closure. Because we are anticipating that there, there will be some relief funds coming. We don't know how much. We don't know what it might cover. But we are tracking that. So we would continue to, to track those kinds of expenses through the summer too.
Do you have any idea what they are? How much we've incurred because of the COVID-19 closing? Any idea off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head, no. But I can get that for the committee. So what has happened is that we were maintaining our records and then the town created specific accounts for us to charge against that. So I've got to put those two costs together.
Okay. Okay.
Our expenses with, with what the, the town has incurred and I'll get that information to you.
Okay. So basically.
Systems exist.
Just want to make sure that people are clear that we are not currently saving any money because schools are closed. That is correct. There is no cost savings right now because schools are closed.
So there's, there are new costs that we're incurring that were not budgeted. And there are other costs that were budgeted that we're not expending at the moment. What the total net is going to be, we're not sure. Because there are still some big unknowns at this point. Transportation contracts being one of those big unknowns. I'm not prepared to articulate a plan for you this evening, but just know that we're looking to see what monies we have in the current year budget. What monies we have available to us through grants because they've relaxed some of the grant requirements for how, you know, there, there are always limitations for how you can spend grant funds. They've, they've relaxed some of that a bit. So we're looking to see what we have available to us this year so that we can actually purchase devices, whether those be Chromebooks, additional tablets or what have you. So that for next year, the kids will all have their own device to start the year out. And if we are in a hybrid model, they have their device. If we have to go to a full remote learning like we're in now, they will have a device. And they'll have a device if they're in the classroom, which is not a bad thing. So just know that we, there, there are probably going to be some monies that we, we will be able to recoup because of the closure. But they are really going to be prioritized around us being ready for whatever is coming our way in August and September in terms of readiness to continue in this model, worst case scenario. So that every student has their own device and can access whatever we've, we've got in terms of instruction and, and other resources that are available to families and, and staff.
Mr. Cassidy?
Just one word about this year's budget, which is, remember we've, we're incurring a lot of new salaries against our salary and wages accounts.
Yeah.
There's not, there's not a lot of money there. There, there is a freeze, which is going to be, it sounds like we're going to be lifted and do some last minute purchasing for this year. Now, some of those purchases are, were were considered for next year's budget and we, we were planning on purchasing them this year. There's not a lot of money left in supplies and services. As, as the superintendent mentioned, you know, there, there's a question about the transportation money and some legislation that may be coming from the governor about paying school, school bus companies that we're just, I, I, I can't, I can't in good faith spend that money if, if it is potentially something that's going to mandate municipalities to pay school bus companies. So for me to start spending that, that money at this time, I can't do that and I can't recommend that. So we are, to say there's a, there's a, there's a whole lot of money, there isn't.
No, I just wanted, I wanted the public to be aware that there is not just a pot of money that we're saving because the schools are closed. That is not happening right now. Okay. Does the school committee have any other questions?
I had, I just wanted to make sure that the people who are listening and if they want to participate know how to do so. Which would mean on your Zoom, you click to your participants, click on participants, and then there's an option to raise or lower your hand at the bottom right of your screen. So if you have any input, now is your time to speak up.
Do you see anybody? No?
I don't see any raised hands.
No? Okay. Then do we want to move forward with reckoning this horrific scenario?
Do we want to close the public hearing?
Well, if no one, no one is, yeah, no one is commenting, no one has hands raised, no one?
No, I see no hands raised. I'm scrolling through the participants list. And if you can't find the participant hand raised list, try the reactions.
I don't know. I don't know that people are here. Some people I think are here for public comment at the end.
Yeah. All right. Well, then that may be.
Yeah.
So I don't see any, any hands up.
Okay. So we can close the public hearing?
Do you need a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, Jim.
If you need a motion to close the public hearing, I move that we close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call vote. All in favor?
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Mr. Levesque?
Yes.
Mr. Layton? And Mrs. Shroka?
Yes.
Now, we need to move forward with this budget as presented.
This is Jim Levesque. I will make a motion that we approve the budget as, or back the budget as presented with the finance committee and town meeting.
Do I have a second?
Carol Ashambo, I will second.
All in favor? We need a roll call vote.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Mr. Levesque?
Yes.
Mr. Layton?
He said yes, but I didn't hear him.
I didn't hear him either.
I still can't hear you, Brian.
He's saying it. You can see he's saying it. Thumbs up for yes. Okay.
Mrs. Shroka?
Yes.
Okay. So now it's, we're just going to move to the next top item on the agenda. Okay. Public comment, we did, we, public comment on agenda items? Do we see anybody have a public comment on the agenda item? Which are permission to open, open new positions and that's about it. I can't imagine anybody has a comment on that.
I see no hands.
No hands? Okay. Did everybody take a look at the regular session, April 15th, 2020?
Yes.
Okay. And were any changes, any required changes? No? So we can, I'll take a motion to approve regular session minutes from April 15th.
This is Carol Ashambo and I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular session, April 15th, 2020.
This is Jim Levesque.
Wendy?
This is Wendy Bertrand. I'll second the motion.
Okay, we need a roll call vote and Brian is on mute right now.
He's unmuted right now. We'll go to him first. Mr. Layton?
Yes.
Mr. Levesque?
Yes.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Shroka?
Yes.
We had line item transfers to review that were in our packet.
We have many.
Yes.
This evening. So I'm going to ask Mr. Cassidy to.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Away.
Okay, so Mr. Laund is here too. So what I'd like to present, we've got three transfers. This is just taking care of some negative balances that, that are outstanding in the, in, in three areas. The, the first one is reconciling to substitute accounts. So one of the, one of the long-term substitute account at Tricky Hill, which I think you were aware of at, at the last budget because it was in a negative. We've had two long-term sub back-to-back situations at the school. It was an unfunded line item and I'm just transferring money into that account. In addition, there were some long-term substitute issues at our middle school as well. So that, that's why that account is a little bit over at this time. So we're moving all of our, some of our, well, not all of our balances, but some of our balances in some of our other substitutes account to these accounts. So that's, that's the first one. The second one is we had a $36, $3,670 expense associated with our accreditation. And that was having that group do that, that study at, at the high school and there's some travel expenses that were associated with with that, with that accreditation visit. And then finally, Mr. Laund is proposing some end of the year projects at a cost of $20,000 coming out of our electricity account. So there, there are a variety of small projects that are being taken care of and some of them are listed on that sheet. So that's a quick summary of what we're moving forward for transfer.
Does anyone have any questions on the line item transfers? No? No, Brian? No? So I will take a motion to approve the line item transfers as presented in, in our folders.
This is Jim Levesque. I'll make a motion to approve line item transfers as presented in, in our folders in the amount of $3,670, $20,000 and what's the other one? $30,713.
Carol Ashambo, I will second it.
Roll call vote. All in favor?
Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Mr. Levesque?
Yes.
Mr. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Shroka?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy.
So a question to the superintendent. That will be a signable form for us.
In a Google Drive?
The Drive.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Superintendent's report? Do you have a report other than the budget?
I do.
Okay, great.
So the commissioner shared some guidance for remote learning for the remainder of the school year and the instructional leadership team reviewed the most recent guidance from the commissioner on remote learning. And we feel that we are already operating in alignment with the new guidance.
Oh, thankfully.
Just very good news. No more adjustments.
Yeah.
We are at a point though where it's good practice in education to reflect on how things are going. And we're, we're at that point. I think we've had enough weeks under our belt that we can take a look back and see what we might want to adjust. We have, you know, had some suggestions from parents for things that might make it easier for them at home supporting their learners. We've also had some suggestions come in from students, particularly at the high school. And we're going to start to engage in some dialogue with teachers in small groups in each building and see what their thoughts are on making some adjustments that might actually enhance the remote learning that we've got going on right now. The, the shifts might be unique to each building because the needs of the students at different ages and grade levels is different. And the level of dependence upon their parents is also different. So I don't expect there to be any major shifts in any way. But as the, as the staff at each of the buildings have conversation and they make some tweaks to the ways that they're either posting work or providing any other kinds of supports for students and families, those, those changes, again, I expect to be relatively minor changes. But those would be communicated out by the principal and the teachers. So we'll keep you posted on that. And I would imagine that if there are any adjustments that you'd probably be hearing about them or seeing them in about a week's time. The food gift card drive, I, I want to thank again Katie Berry, our middle school secretary, and Katie McGuire, our middle school nurse for organizing the food gift card donation to support our families in need of a little assistance, given the current conditions resulting from COVID-19. They have received $8,000 in gift card donations to the area grocery stores and restaurants that provide takeout. End of year plans. It is that time of year. Principals are working to develop plans for locker cleanout, pickup of their locker, desk or cubby contents. We're planning for a curbside pickup of these materials so that people aren't coming into the buildings in, in big numbers. The principals are also working with their building leadership teams to reimagine their typical end of year traditions. The high school administration has been working with the class advisors and listening to input from students and families about senior events. Mr. McGrath actually met yesterday with his school advisory council and he's looking at the feasibility of postponing the graduation until August 1st. In the hopes that potentially between now and then, some of the physical distancing requirements might be relaxed a bit. The hope would be that we would be able to have some more traditional version of a, of a graduation at that time. I, I can tell you that Mr. McGrath is very methodical in the way he approaches his decision-making. He is going to be engaging his faculty in some dialogue around the graduation. But he anticipates that he'll have a final decision made and an announcement for everybody within the next week. Yep, good news. And lastly, this coming Friday, May 1st, is School Lunch Hero Day. And they are definitely heroes right now. They absolutely are heroes. Last Wednesday was Administrative Professionals Day. And I want to thank all of our secretaries and food service staff for all they do to support all of our students. As you know, this is that time of year where there are many other recognition days in the weeks ahead. And I plan to bring forward resolutions for all of these recognitions at the next meeting. So that you can, as a committee officially recognize the contributions that all of our different staff make to the, the support and education of our students.
That's what you have. The one question I have about curbside pickup. A curbside pickup piece that I only, because the school locker room, the high school locker room. Okay, they don't. school locker room, okay, they don't typically have a locker in there with their, how is that going to work? Because I know several students who lack things in there.
Yep. So, you know, we know that there are students who still haven't picked up their instruments, as an example, even though we had an instrument pickup day. So we'll have to address that separately from the locker cleanout. And we know that we have a unique circumstance with the athletic lockers in the gym.
Yeah.
So I can tell you that Mr. McGrath is working with AD bundle on a plan so that students can come in and get their belongings. Those students may actually have to come into that locker room area to get their belongings because they don't have assigned lockers. It would be hard for us to determine whose materials are whose. So if a plan like that has to be developed where students actually come in, they will be very careful about limiting and keeping, you know, one student at a time in the locker and setting up probably, I would think, an appointment schedule.
Yeah.
Kids to arrive at an assigned time to go in and retrieve their things from their from their gym locker.
Okay. The other ones are assigned, so those are easier to just divvy out.
Right. And we know at the K-5 level, some of our students have things that are in their desks.
Okay.
They might have pencil cases or crayons or markers that are that are in their desks. So we're coordinating with teachers to pull those materials out of the classroom space to have those ready with the locker contents for pickup. You know, it's not going to happen probably in the next two weeks. It'll probably be after that. But they are working out and coordinating strategically how they can collect all of these materials and get them back to the families and students.
Okay, great. Next item on the agenda. Does anybody have any questions for the superintendent?
No.
No, okay. So now we're going on to the first item of new business. It's the permission to open, to post the open positions. We have a hiring freeze in place, and they are now going to request the hiring freeze for positions that they have that. Are you going to address this, superintendent? Or is Mr. Cassidy?
I'll let Mr. Cassidy handle this one.
Mr. Cassidy?
There you go.
Hi, everyone. So for your consideration, there are a number of positions that we would like to post. And earlier in this pandemic, we had recommended a hiring freeze just to make sure that we're responsible and we consider each position seriously before we post. There is a group of positions the superintendent and I want you to consider for us to post tonight. So this is removing the hiring freeze for the following position. For your consideration, there's a open nurse position starting next school year. And there's an English language learner position at the beginning of next school year as well. We would like to repost the Title I Coordinator and the Reading Teacher at Turkey Hill Elementary School. Those two positions are grant-funded and are not located in the local budget. Any benefits are paid by Title I grant, so there's no impact on the local budget for those positions. We did post those positions a number of times this year, but there's no success of recruiting anybody. So we would like to repost those positions. The next few positions are stipend positions, which need your authorization to move forward on. So the first one under consideration is at Lunenburg High School, and it's the department head positions. So there are eight positions there. And last year, it was a different model. It wasn't, we had negotiated with the union of some other benefit for anyone who was going to be a department head, knowing that this year we would we would fully post it for funding. Another group of positions for your consideration are Special Service Extended Year Program, which is our summer school program. Not really, I can't comment on where the program stands right now and whether we've received any direction from DESI on moving forward on that and what that looks like. But this is just a, just getting ahead of the curve and posting the positions. So when the program is implemented, if it is implemented, we can start appointing people to that program. Kind of a similar situation with the next two recommended postings, which are our athletic coaches at our middle school and high school. Not really sure, I can't comment on what athletics look like in the fall. Certainly, we want to begin that recruitment process in the event it's full steam ahead or it's an abbreviated season. It's just lining up those people in those appointed positions. So those are the positions that we have tonight for your consideration moving forward for next school year.
And the top two are the retirements?
That is correct.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Cassidy?
Yeah, this is General Levesque. I'm just just wanted to make sure the stipends for the athletic coaches are assuming that we are actually using their time. These are not something that if somebody signs up, they get it whether we play or not. Correct?
That's correct. And we'll have to get to that point, which is whether it's, if it's a half-season, it will likely be some sort of prorated stipend for our coach. So it's, we'll work with the LEA on the appropriate stipend for those groups and for those coaches.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No, I'll take a motion to approve the, to lift the hiring freeze for these positions as presented.
This is General Levesque. I'll make a motion to approve lifting the hiring freeze for these positions that were discussed.
This is Wendy Bertrand. I'll second.
All in favor? We need the roll call vote. Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Mr. Levesque?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton? And Mrs. Shoka?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Cassidy. Old business. We have reports from Finance Committee. Carol?
I've watched a lot of meetings lately, and a lot of the information has already come to you tonight. I am hop around so that I'm not repeating myself. At the Thursday, April 23rd meeting of Finance Committee, it was stated that this year's, but through fiscal, the fiscal year 2020 is still, there's still no problem with the current budget that we are working under. The town manager had been asked to find additional cuts in the FY21 budget by the Board of Selectmen on the 21st of April. She did so and reported there was a surplus nine, I'm not going to read all these numbers, $967,000 surplus in her proposed budget to balance off unknowns like the local aid and local receipts. Full budget was still at 1.58%. At the joint meeting of the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen last night, they met with Senator Trent and Representative Hay as they were explaining why the Monty Tech formula was what it was, the television feed completely cut out, and by the time I regrouped the whole conversation was over. So I don't know anything about that, but except for that, it was, the last part I caught was it was very technical and difficult kind of formula. That's all I got on that. But also that they are going to try and push the chairman of the Ways and Means Committee to get some guidance as to how much local, how the local aid cut should they plan on, to make a long story short. And the town manager, at that point, had built a $982,156 surplus in the budget to help in case there was a 10% shortfall in the local aid. There is a strong stabilization fund, and the school, she feels confident in her budget with our budget at a 1.58% increase. And that Dr. Burnham and Mr. Cassidy will present that budget proposal to the Finance Committee tomorrow evening. Their final budget hearing is the 7th of May, and I believe the warrant goes to be printed for town meeting on the 13th. So that's what I learned.
Thank you, Carol. Mr. Levesque, do you have a capital plan?
I do. So when we originally did the capital plan, we had planned on a $1.3 million cut to cover capital planning stuff. We met again last week, and I'm getting the numbers here, and reprioritized several items and actually had to reduce the total capital plan to $664,800. So we cut out half of the capital plan for the things that were related to raise and appropriate. So anything where we were to raise inappropriate funds, we kind of removed, and we're using free cash for these expenses. There's a couple of things in the schools that were removed as a result of the reevaluation, such as the admin for the air conditioning at Turkey Hill that did not make the final cut as we reevaluated things. The design for the AC at the classrooms primary did make the cut. That's still there. And the asbestos sebatement and ceiling replacement at Turkey Hill is still there. So we managed to just lose one little thing on the on the capital plan on our side. Town manager thinks this is reasonable considering where we are, and that will be the capital plan as presented to town meeting on the 13th of June.
Do you remember how much that Turkey Hill AC was?
I believe it was $28,000, but let me double check here. My other, the screen I was using to read on everything crashed, so now I'm looking at my phone here.
Sorry.
But no worries. It was, where was it?
Mr. Laund, you're unmuted if you know the figure.
The admin air commission said it was $28,000.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
Okay. And now we're on to public comment, open to the public for anything that falls under school committee jurisdiction. And I think there might be some people who may want to participate. Sure. Do you see anyone raising their hands?
I don't see anybody in the participant list yet raising their hand.
Well, let's wait.
If they've dialed in, I think it's star nine, is it? And if they can't find the participant list to raise their hand, I think they can do reactions.
I'm still not seeing any.
And I don't even see, like, there are just no faces anyway. I can't see them. But I think that some of them might have been on for graduation, and you might have answered their question.
Wait a minute.
Oh, who is it?
Lisa Harrison.
Yeah. Lisa Harrison. She's muted.
Come on down.
I'm trying to unmute her.
Okay. I wish I could see her face.
There she is.
Hi, Lisa.
There you go.
See your face.
Roll over.
I'm here. I'm here.
Hi, Lisa.
I'm looking at my other, my other screen, unfortunately. First of all, I just want to thank the school committee. I know this is really difficult times, and, you know, the thoughtful conversation that we all, you know, heard earlier is much appreciated. The only thing I wanted to raise, and obviously a lot of folks are online wanting to understand about graduation and our seniors, and there's the graduation piece of it, and I just wanted to know if there are any plans in place or when we might hear about any of the other kind of milestones that occurred during the end of the year. So, you know, the senior awards, or I know there's a lot of great work going on around the motorcade, but I think just some communications about what's happening. I know that there's probably a lot of really thoughtful work being done, and just for us to understand what that is, I think would alleviate a lot of concerns or anxieties right now.
And we don't know that information. But we can, but the persons that may know it would be able to pass it on. That would be Mr. McGrath and the advisors, and I know one of the advisors is on here. I saw her. But perhaps an email can go out to senior parents with that information?
So I think that they're still finalizing some plans and making some decisions, but I anticipate that by the end of next week, all decisions about different senior events will have been made, and Ms. McGrath will be communicating out to everybody.
Excellent. That's great. I think just understanding when we might hear, you know, will help.
Sure.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you all, and really, thank you all.
Thank you.
It's a lot of hard work. I was just saying to a friend, you know, doing a lot of the same kind of trying to understand what relief is out there and everything's changing all the time and people wanting you to have answers that you can't actually have. So I really do appreciate all the hard work that the committee is doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you see anybody else raising?
Mr. Bertrand?
I will, I'll piggyback on that because I actually attended a school council meeting yesterday, so that wasn't listed among the check-ins for tonight. We typically would, but we just had so few, you know what I mean? We've had so few meetings with auxiliary committees. But yes, so in yesterday's council meeting, the other end-of-year senior events, Mr. McGrath is working with senior class advisors as well as others to look at planning those events. You know, as Ms. Harrison stated, the motorcade, that's, you know, that's well, you know, well in the works. And it was great in that meeting to see willingness to collaborate within that meeting. There were many, many students and parents attending who spoke. Mr. McGrath was very eager to listen and hear their input. So I think that all of that information will be forthcoming soon, and Superintendent also touched upon that earlier in her report. But yes, it's, it's coming, much is in the works. Senior rewards was mentioned, all of those things. So I, unfortunately, I think it's just another hang tight a tiny bit longer from what I got in there. But the overwhelming sentiment in the meeting that was coming from parents and students was their wish to have as many of their activities that they
was their wish to have as many of their activities that they can have and the ones that can be as close to typical as they possibly can be. Um, particularly graduation, um, that, that that was their wish to, to seek collaboration and multiple plans and, um, obviously accepting if things can't be, but to not just skip ahead to, you know, to one option and not look at other possibilities.
Yes, especially since Lemonster postponed theirs just yesterday to August 1st on Doyle Field at nine o'clock at night to avoid on the turf.
So that, that yesterday, uh, Mr. McGrath came well, um, prepared in that meeting. The first thing he began that meeting with was, um, stating, um, he's in, um, he regularly collaborates with other administrators in the mid-watch. And he had an update on where other schools were at. These several schools were still exploring all possibilities. These were, these had postponed and some of these were going with a, with a virtual type graduation. So it's, um, he was well aware and, and speaking with, with other districts and well aware of what was going on in others.
Um, the other question I think that, um, some of the seniors might've had, and I don't know if it was brought up yesterday because I was unable to make that meeting because I had a conflict, was the last day for seniors because it's typically earlier in May than all the other students. And they're a little confused now as to what the last day is for them and learning in the learning mode. You know, I know that the AP exam is pushed back a couple, a week or a couple of weeks. I don't even know for sure, but, um, my daughter does. But I'm just wondering if that will be pushed out as well. Maybe Mr. McGrath can push that out in his email this week so the seniors know when their last learning day is.
I know, Dr. Burnham, Mr. McGrath mentioned that, um, that was something Dr. Burnham would have.
The commissioner, um, um, early on in this process, uh, recommended that we, um, that, that people actually push, um, the end dates for seniors, including graduation dates, push them back, um, a little later in June as typically most of them are very early in June, that first week, the first weekend, um, because of the time lost on, on learning during that, uh, three-week enrichment period, right? Um, we know that there will be gaps for, for us to fill for our students and those students will be returning to us next year. And we know that we will have to, um, close those, those learning gaps for them. The seniors aren't coming back to us. We aren't going to have a different opportunity to close gaps for those students. So, um, as we're in a credit, no credit, uh, you know, Mr. McGrath made the decision early on that there would be no, uh, senior exams, no exams this year.
No final.
Right. So the time, at least the time that's dedicated to exams, students will likely be remaining in the learning mode through, through what would have been their exam week.
Exams, okay. Okay. But not much fur- not much more time after that?
I don't anticipate it being too much time after that. Um, you know, Mr. McGrath was looking at the, at the calendar. We had talked about, um, you know, potentially since there aren't as, there aren't going to be the same senior events that typically occur and, uh, typically occur during school hours, um, you know, the senior breakfast and the motorcade and so on. Um, that you're not going to necessarily need a, a week dedicated to, to these different events. So, um, there might be a, a day or two that they could recoup there as well and still have their senior events in this new model, whatever that, uh, might be. I know that the senior motorcade will still take place during the day and I hear it's going to be absolutely grand. And I think that, you know, we've opened, um, a Pandora's box here because I think maybe the graduating classes after this are going to want an equally grand motorcade.
Oh, they're already shut down.
Dr. Burnham, just a quick question. Um, in, in that, um, April break, we worked through. So is that something that would come into consideration as well?
Yep. So, you know, they've recouped those four days. They're going to recoup some days, um, that would have been dedicated to exams. Um, so honestly, if, if they go in a learning mode through that week and maybe a day or two beyond there, they really have had an opportunity to recoup the better part of those three weeks. So they, they really should have been able to get through, uh, most of their curriculum as it, as it would have been delivered had they been on campus the entire time.
So that typical May 22nd date would have ended that there, it's guidance from the Education Commissioner on doing an additional three weeks. Is that what I'm hearing?
It wasn't an additional three weeks as specified, but he was cognizant of the fact that the seniors had lost, um, learning time during those enrichment weeks. Um, in terms of a direct instruction on curriculum standards. Um, it was still learning time. They were exposed to some really rich materials. So, um, it wasn't a, a total loss, but it wasn't delivery of the standard curriculum for their courses. So, um, you know, since rolling into the remote learning and direct instruction, uh, recouping those days for April break, um, put it, put us in a good position not to have the kids have to attend, you know, all the way, uh, up to June in order to recoup, uh, the time lost uh, on instructional time during the enrichment weeks. So I, I, I think that they're in really good shape. Um, you know, still to finish a little bit ahead of, um, you know, that original, uh, graduation date. Um, but I think that we've met the, um, or that we will meet the, um, the spirit of what the commissioner was looking for when he recommended weeks ago, very early in, in this, uh, closure, that districts should be pushing back their graduation dates because he knew that they needed to have access, um, to the time on learning. Um, but again, I think, you know, when we take a look at what we've done, uh, they're in pretty good shape. And I'm sure that, uh, you know, Mr. McGrath will be, uh, working with his department heads to figure out, um, what, what's the best end date for the academic remote learning piece. But I'm sure that's one of the communications that he can be, yeah, I, if he's got that figured out by the Friday email out to, to families, I'm sure he'll be including that. If not, it'll probably be part and parcel of the announcement around all of the different senior, um, events. So I would expect that, you know, roughly within a week's time, um, all families and students should know what the plan is, um, for seniors for, for this year.
Okay. Do we have any other public comment? Do you see anybody?
I do not. I see one person just raised their hand.
Who is it?
Kathy Hyatt.
Oh, Kathy Hyatt.
Okay.
Hi Kathy. Where are you?
Hi there. I'm here.
There, okay.
All right. Um, thank you all for doing a great job, school committee. Um, it was, it's tough times and I, I see that and hear that. Um, with regard to seniors, I, I am the class advisor, um, but I also am a mom. Um, and I have a senior here who has just had the rug pulled out from under him in the end of his senior year. And he would like some consideration and compassion regarding knowing an end date for his, his learning days. And his peers have these same feelings, I am sure. But he is, he is very emotional about it right now. I don't want to, I'm not putting him on camera. Um, but he, you know, they, they are losing a lot. I appreciate and I know that you are all going to work to give them the best senior experience that we can, given our circumstances. Um, but they, I'm concerned that, you know, we're just not, it's not the same. Um, but they do really just want an end date. Um, and we were, um, starting to count down before we had to leave school. Um, the tradition is to start with the, you know, 50 days away. And at the time, I believe that their last academic day would have been May 21st. Um, and then they would have had finals starting May 22nd. Um, we had the Memorial Day weekend. So then they would have tested Tuesday through Friday, ending on that May 29th. Um, and so with that, and given the fact that they did do four days over April break, um, which was not expected, but they did. Um, we would really love to see them, I as a mom and a parent of a senior, I would really love to see them have a May 22nd end date, which is learning days of what they would have had. In, in my math, because we added four days that they learned over April break. And they would, their finals would have ended on Friday, May 29th. So that, that's, I just wanted to give those thoughts on that particular date. And these kids really, really want to hear what the date is. And they want to start that senior countdown back up because that was part of the fun. They've talked about doing a virtual senior countdown. I'm not sure what that'll look like, if it'll be on their Instagram page or if they'll, they'll do it somehow, uh, through school media and Google Classroom. I'm not sure. But, um, that is our request or my request.
Do you have anything about, um, graduation, Kathy? Or were you okay with the meeting, how the meeting went yesterday?
Um, I was very happy with how the meeting went yesterday. Wendy's, Wendy's comments were right on point about, um, I, I felt about, um, Mr. McGrath was very, um, he had, he had had a plan for us. He presented and, um, and he, and he also listened, I think mostly to me talk in that meeting for them. Um, but I, I feel that he heard their request to have, uh, a postponed graduation. Um, I think August 1st would, would be, would be great. And fingers crossed that, uh, everything socially can work out to have a more traditional looking graduation for them.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. I know exactly what Kathy is talking about because I also, senior that lives in my house. And she has been asking about what the last day of school is for her. She had the 19th day for the countdown, which had come and gone in the regular school year. It was in April, April, I think it was the 17th, the week before spring break would have happened. So I, I do know that they were looking forward to having their countdown. Uh, and I'm speaking as a mother here, so I understand exactly where she's coming from with the heartbreak and the grief process that's taking place in senior houses. So, yeah, I am with Kathy 100% and think that some compassion and consideration should be given to the senior class of 2020 and making plans.
Yeah. I just want to weigh in here and let you know that, um, care and concern for these students, particularly the senior class, is first and foremost on the minds of the administration right now. Um, they want to do the best they can under the circumstances to make sure that these kids have the celebration that they deserve to have. It might not look like what they have experienced in the past, but I can, I can assure you that the administration is, is truly concerned about the seniors and this series of events occurring for the seniors in a way that, um, is compliant with the restrictions that have been placed by the governor, um, as well as, um, you know, just the general sense for, um, their, their health and wellness. And that's their physical health and their mental health and wellness.
Then, you know, my daughter asked me right before this meeting as well. I, I told her I believe it was May 22nd, but we'll, we'll find out, won't we?
So we have a hand up?
Oh, who is it?
Mr. Adams?
Yeah, I, so, so as a, as a father with a daughter in another district that's a senior, I, I, I could totally empathize with everyone right now. Um, but I, I want to assure you, I just want to like echo on, um, Dr. Burnham's comments that like, at, at the administrative level, for all of our kids who are making those transitional leaps, um, from second to third grade, from fifth grade to sixth grade, we're doing everything we can to make sure we make it as normal, quote unquote, as possible for those kids. Um, so, so please be assured that like, we, we want, we, our biggest concern is that they have some sense of normalcy in these transitions. So, um, I, I, I just wanted to say that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have their hands up? Can you see that, Jim?
No.
No.
I'm not seeing any. Kate doesn't see any, very big.
Nope.
Although Wendy's chapping at the screen. I don't know.
Wendy, where are you?
Were you trying to say something?
She's not muted by me.
Wendy, on your end?
No, I was pulling up the chat just to see if any.
No. You're good? No comment? Okay. Okay then, um, I think that the senior parents should be looking for an email from Mr. McGrath within the next week with all of the senior activities and dates. Um, hopefully there'll be a postponement of graduation. He's looking into the feasibility of postponing it right now. And we should note that as well in the next week, right? Is that what you were saying, Superintendent? Okay. So, um, that is all we have on the agenda for this evening. So we'll take a motion to adjourn.
This is Jim Leveque. I will make a motion to adjourn at 8:48 PM.
Second. This is Wendy Bertrand, second.
Um, all in favor, roll call vote. Mrs. Ashambo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bertrand?
Yes.
Mr. Leveque? Mr. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Shoka? Thank you.